Also any other interests which you have. The minutes of the meeting, the town council will have on the 13th of January, it's your final appendix A. Are there any questions? No. Can I have a proposal please? That's by Howard. All those in the paper? You wrote, enjoyed or not?
Yes, sorry, I attended.
I'm going to help, sure.
Okay.
Could be sharp.
So just about one, two, three, four, five, six, seven abstentions?
Yeah.
Two, okay, thank you. And before councillor, sorry, before I charge, let me start. Thank you. I therefore councillor's questions, none have been advised, no notified. Chairman and members' reports. That's all leave the sharp one.
Thank you chairman, Oakham and Bloom report, at night of February, although I didn't attend the meeting, I was sent a minute yesterday. The gardening poll day report was extensive, there are many plans ahead, they're going to be very busy, I think, this year. Oakham and Bloom will be renting an o'erplant to cultivate their own plants, which I think is quite good. And they've already been promised a potting shed. The medieval maze for the castle has been put on hold due to the local authority and English heritage being slow in their response. However, they have an idea, don't know what this means, about a memorial garden or a tree or something, a memorial to Roger Beggie, to late Roger Beggie. Applications to enter the Spiddler's Bloom competition will go in in April. A presentation was made by the gardening coordinator about a new arboretum on the bypass. The existing one, of course, is full, they hope to include a community orchard. Funds are very healthy. There were a good number of gardeners under the direction of Craig Howard on Sunday last. The prairie garden is looking very good at the entrance to the library. And I am confident that the town will look excellent with the colour scheme for the summer planting. Thank you chairman. It's written down, Richard.
That's all right.
National Publicity Wedding Group.
Oh, right, no, obviously it is chairman, I was gonna give a briefing on what we'd last spoken about, but to save time, I've actually sent it round on email to everybody. Because I thought it was easier and quicker, so that's what I've done. Everybody received it?
What was that on?
Yeah, they have. You were at the meeting, so yeah, you received it. Okay, I have a new one, my report, that's on the 28th of January, at my reception in the museum, when just under fifty people attended. There was music imbued by the Cadmus College band, which I thought was very good, especially if they've only started playing those instruments since September. It's very good indeed, and some very good response from it, and many thank you letters. Obviously, one thing which we must be aware of is that councillor Roger Beggie died. The funeral is next Monday at ten thirty, I asked anybody who wished to attend to let me know. Because of the, not only of the problems with the church, because I think it's going to be rather crowded, but also for the reception afterwards, which will be in the week's shift. So if anybody does intend to go, could you please let me know as soon as possible?
Chairman, are you going to run the town?
I'm going.
Well, that's all that's needed, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? The report.
Thank you chairman, keep this brief as we can everybody. You've all got a copy of this in front of you. First, Alison and I attended a cemetery management course on Monday at Anstey, very informative, very worthwhile attending. It was actually the Institute of Crematory and Cemetery Management who took it, a very, very engaging facilitator, so that was extremely worthwhile. The next meeting, you all last to know, this is going to be a meeting of the council, not planning parks, this is following discussions with Alf and Adam. Just to let you know, a couple of agenda things on there, there will be a number of planning applications on this one. Reason for that, currently planning subcommittee is in court, it only has two members. Okay, I'll email all of these out to you tomorrow, all the reference numbers, so you can familiarise yourselves before that meeting. Following on from that also, parking review 2016-2017, I know members have already been through this, we've had a few more suggestions have been forwarded to us from Rutland County Council. So again, you'll get a copy of those tomorrow by email, if you want a hard copy, let me know, that will be on the agenda as well for the 24th. Next, town centre improvement, now I emailed this out to you, now a number of you have expressed an interest in attending this event. Now, RCC have sort of said that only two will be permitted, and Alf is going to make the decision on who those two members will be shortly, okay? Integrated Transport Capital Programme, I believe there was something mentioned at the parish council forum, I don't think anybody attended, because obviously it was the same night as Alf's event in the museum. But we've got a copy of a letter relating to a presentation on that, you've got that there. And just to now sort of say, that we council is in the modern day with Facebook and Twitter, Justin's doing a great job on that. Alison and I also have login details in case something untoward happens or whatever, so that we can change passwords, et cetera, et cetera.
Any deputations from members of the public tonight? Welcome to me. Item eight is the working group strategy assurance, this is just a note, and it's from councillor, I just showed the open community centre building, and the way a strategy should be written. So it's just a useful note and possibly a template for future work. Is anyone on that, or? Okay. Thank you. And on to item nine, neighbourhood plan update.
Still a long red document, we'll settle later in the minutes, but with the agenda rather. The steering group has been formed, and subject to council approval, the members' names are on the page of the document too. Liz Sanders has been appointed as the exeser chair for the group. I feel she is a very able person, can take the story very well. The group as a whole, I think it's very encouraging, it's got a wide range of skills there, they can draw on, and a lot of other futures at this stage, hopefully that will continue. The boundary which we are preparing includes Barleythorpe and a little bit of Edlington, just on the, where Edlington just goes inside the bypass. The group felt it was best to include Barleythorpe, as it is almost an integral part of the town, the services are shared between the two areas. And to split it could cause all sorts of difficulties, particularly with planning in the future. There are small caveats, large caveat really, in that some residents of Barleythorpe have applied to form a parish forum. This significance of that being only parish forum or a parish council can produce a neighbourhood plan, declare a boundary. So what they have done is to do documentation and submit that to can be council or form forum. At the same time, they have declared a boundary which is existing parish boundary for Barleythorpe. We've had three meetings in total with representatives of Barleythorpe. They have made it quite clear to us that they want to go their own way, they're looking at Barleythorpe only. They have not displayed any interest in there being one neighbourhood plan, which is Oakham and Barleythorpe and a bit of Edlington. So now it will be in the hands of RCC to decide whether or not there'll be one plan, Oakham and Barleythorpe, or whether there'll be two separate ones. There will be public consultation, that's ongoing now, and they'll then make their decision in the next six weeks, that we'll all know what's happening. In the meantime, the steering group has decided to move forward on the assumption there will be just one plan. If there's two plans, it's not going to have a significant impact on the work which is done to date, all the work we expect to have completed in the next six weeks or so. So the recommendations for you is that council approve the members of the steering group. The terms of reference for steering group will be in appendix C1. The area, which we said, again, is Oakham plus Barleythorpe, plus a little bit of Edlington, that falls within the bypass. And what I would also add, we have met with residents of Edlington, and they have not had any objections to what we've done. We've also invited them to involve if they wish to do so, and you can go back to their parish meeting to decide what they want to do. But we foresee no problems with that at all. And the third one is the council's response to the consultation of the Barleythorpe neighbourhood plan. Okay, any other questions? Questions?
Just councillors.
And I'd like to say that it's very nice to read your, as your honourable neighbour, your words of inclusion, and that it's something that this council could learn from. And maybe we should adopt the same policy. I do have concerns about the Barleythorpe issue, because it's not just the ex-council that's involved. I have spoken to people who have been involved with the parish meetings, I believe they're called, and they don't want any connection to Oakham. They want to keep their identity as Barleythorpe. And I think that's going to be a very costly thing with the boundary and consultation that's going on. And also, I'm wondering why we have to approve the membership, because personally, there's one name on there that I would disapprove of. But this is supposed to be a community-led committee and project, why are we needing to approve the membership? If you want to, I would say who I don't approve, as simple as that, but, and the other point is, in the thing is, if a person wishing to become a member of the steering group, they have to have a meeting with the chairman, and at least one Oakham Town councillor. Why an Oakham Town councillor, it's not our project, we're just supporting it. I'm not going to go here, I'm just pointing my...
Well, I'll answer those in the order given. The first one, I was going to say this, I'm sure there are residents of Barleythorpe who want to keep Barleythorpe as it is. There are, we have also had feedback from residents who want to be part of Oakham and see themselves as part of Oakham, so. But RCC will make the decision after public consultation, that's out of our hands. The second question, sorry, it's from my board, what's that one?
It was about the relevance of us approving the membership when it's a community-led committee, which seems to be run very well at the moment.
Okay, well, the neighbourhood plan will be an Oakham Town Council neighbourhood plan. The council must admit it, the council will facilitate it. We, the working group, I'll just remind you of former meetings, the working group decided that the best way forward would be for it to be community-led, which is why neither Alf or myself aren't chairing it. If you look at the why neighbourhood, why the provision was set up by the government, it was to allow local communities to decide the way their community develops and goes forward. So it's not council-led or dominated, but it is council facilitated, but it is still an Oakham Town Council neighbourhood plan. That is why this has come back to council. And the third question?
Was basically similar to that, is, you know, why would a person who's interested or having a thing need to speak to an Oakham Town councillor and the chairman? I don't see that appropriate, that should be down to the committee of the neighbourhood plan to make those decisions, because a town councillor wouldn't have a clue if they're not on it. That's always the way I read it, it just seems a bit...
Look, this is what the committee, but that has agreed, we're talking about, steering group has agreed, an Oakham Town Council on the steering group.
It doesn't say that.
No, that's what it says, that's what you mean.
But maybe it should be amended, so that it says on the steering group, but then why, why would it have to be specified that an Oakham Town Council is involved?
Of course, it's an Oakham Town Council neighbourhood plan.
But that's not what we were led to believe in the beginning.
No, you've always been led to believe it's an Oakham Town Council neighbourhood plan.
No, I was always led to believe it was being supported by Oakham Town Council, and it was a community-led.
No, it's an Oakham Town Council neighbourhood plan.
I don't know, we won't argue, but I just feel that sometimes the information here has not been that clear.
Thank you chairman, can I say I think it's an excellent report, a job we extremely recommend, and I would be prepared to propose acceptance.
Okay, thank you. Can I take any other questions first, before we go for a second?
It's not a question, just to say, be aware, I've had two lengthy telephone calls from North West Ward members, who, I'll tell you, that they just want to be Oakham and leave Barleythorpe. I don't know who the lady was in the marketplace who shouted at me this morning, saying, I don't want Barleythorpe, I don't want Barleythorpe in Oakham. But just be aware, I have not made any opinion myself, and I have not passed on any opinions that I'm thinking.
So let me clarify something, we're not taking over Barleythorpe.
No.
Barleythorpe has an impact on Oakham, because we are, from the report, we've worked together, because in fact, some of the boundary runs through some of the streets.
Yes, I know.
Part of the New Zealand, it's in Oakham, part of it in Barleythorpe. And there's no way we can consider a neighbourhood plan without including Barleythorpe, there's too many implications.
This was, chairman, sorry, this was not about the neighbourhood plan, they, these people, that, three, and I don't know the names, just said, keep Oakham as Oakham and let them have their parish. I'm just wanting you to be aware that there's another side to the story.
That's the subject of a community governance meeting.
Oh, absolutely, yes, I know that, I'm just making you aware.
We will make submissions to that, and that will be coming out at the end of the year. That's a good.
Saying that, I have asked the council whether they could consider retracting that, because I think it's a total waste of money, because it was all based on the fact of extra income for this council, which was proved to be inaccurate information, and the county council doesn't have much money like we don't have, and they're going to...
Sorry, we're just going off subject.
No, it's important, because it's all included in this, this plan is based on...
It's not part of the neighbourhood plan, that's part of the community government.
It's mentioned in here.
It's mentioned as part of it, but it is not part of the council.
So it's relevant, it's relevant, and this council is costing the taxpayer thousands of pounds, unnecessary.
Can I have a second, the proposal is on page? Yes, you may. Okay, we have a proposal by council, we have a second of council.
No, I haven't.
Sorry councillor, it stops. Okay, first one is to approve the, six point one, Mr. Approve the members of the community to form the neighbourhood plan steering group.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's your proposal, Vince, you're the second, second one. All those in favour of that?
Yes.
All those against? Abstentions?
I'm abstaining, because I see that line as...
Two, in terms of reference to the steering group, appendix C1 be approved by the council, that proposal, councillor Howard, councillor Sturbs. Second, all those in favour? All those against? Abstention? Do you want your abstention now?
Yes, please.
Six three, neighbourhood plan area in the submission statement, that appendix C2 and C3, we agreed prior to submission to Oakham County Council by the 15th of February. Pardon? Councillor Sturbs, second it, councillor Howard, all in favour? Against?
I'm against the boundary.
Want that noted?
Yes, please, because I don't support...
Six four, the council response to the appendix C4 to the consultation on the Barleythorpe neighbourhood plan area be agreed. Councillor Howard, councillor Sturbs, all in favour? Okay, against?
Yes, it's the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just, yeah, can I just read to write what councillor Sturbs has said? Could you take our thanks on behalf of the council to the steering group, please?
Again, good report. We've now had that plan up there for about half an hour, so nobody noticed what's wrong with it? Doesn't matter if you haven't, you won't notice now.
Neighbourhoods.
Neighbourhood, yeah. It has been changed. It has been changed on the...
I didn't like to point it out, because I'm embarrassed.
Is that going off now, the line?
Yep, yeah, it's one... Okay, that's more or less, Martin, you're very chavering. Okay, then do a meet.
Just move up at the top, move up at the top, that's what.
Okay, I can attest to the new member, the interview panel interviewed Mrs. Tracy Carr beginning of the week, and in attendance also two members who are observing. It is a recommendation of the panel that Mrs. Tracy Carr be co-opted to be the new member for Oakham South East Ward. Are there any questions on that?
I guess she actually wants it. Well, I just asked her, because we did have a situation where we did call someone, and then we had to...
I would have proposed if she didn't want to.
But why is she not here this evening?
It's a personal arrangement, sorry.
That's nothing to do with it, we're talking about co-opting, not whether she's here or not.
Well, no, because to me it shows, I know she's here.
Nothing to do with it.
She did have a long standing engagement.
Can I have a...
Well, that's all I wanted to know from the chairman, Joyce, it's not the personal thing, if she's given a reason.
Have a second, please.
Oh, second.
Well, all in favour?
Can I abstain, and there's nothing against the lady, I just want to...
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, four, you should abstain.
Do you mind, I don't know the lady, I have, I would...
The interview panel actually interviewed you.
Yes, I know, I'd rather abstain.
Okay, can I have the show of hands again, please, all in favour, no talking, please, no talking, please, all in favour? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, you got it, okay, one abstention, two abstentions, okay?
Thank you.
So therefore, Mrs. Tracy Carr is now co-opted to Oakham South East Ward. Now we have two further vacancies, one in North East and one in North West. There has been some proposal about undertaking it in a slightly different way than we did in the previous one, not with an interview panel. So one method is to continue to do it with an interview panel as we did before, or the way is to have a sort of a social gathering where people who wish to apply for co-option can meet all members. What do you think of either of those, who would like to discuss that?
Thank you chairman, I think it should stay as it is, I think it's the right and proper way of doing it. The group have the opportunity to ask all the questions, every councillor has the opportunity to come along and listen and make their own mind up whether they accept that person or not. And I think that's the way it should go.
I think Vince was...
No, not him.
Okay, sorry. I'm for the opposite, and the reason why is, I did observe the interview, I've been criticised this evening for asking why the lady wasn't here, which I think was a reasonable question, to be told that she's apologised to the chairman, and she's not here. At that meeting, she was asked personal questions about what her job was and everything. And I had comments about my co-option interview, which was recorded and is online, and the words of the people who have seen it, it is not a job interview. And that lady was practically put through a personal job interview. It is totally irrelevant, they're asked the question, the only question that related to the council really was, what would you do if one of your proposals fell at the council? Nobody is going to sit in an interview and say, well, I'm just going to accept it. Yes, we do, I accept things, but if somebody had turned around and said, well, actually, I'm very passionate about this, and I would actually go away and get more information and fight for it, they wouldn't get co-opted. So I put forward the suggestion, which I had before, is that we do like Uppingham Town Council do, which brought about a whole new town council apart from one member. They held an open day, people came, registered an interest, councillors talked to them about the role of a councillor, people got to know them, and, well, it was a different situation, it wasn't co-option, but it was a better way of getting the communication of what the council does. This lady came along, and she didn't know all the things that the council did, that's probably the council's fault, but my thing is that the interview is totally inappropriate. When someone has to sit there and the questions are based on, what do you do for a job? We ended up listening to a lady talking about people jumping in a river, it was irrelevant. Sorry, I won't go on, but... See, Alf doesn't even remember, because it was a long interview, sorry, I'm... Well, they weren't listening to it.
I mean, this is both sides of the tables, I would like to take both sides and say, we have the potential, when there's a ward surgery, to meet and greet members of the town. That is the first stage of the co-option process. The second stage would be then to back it up with an interview. I would propose that that would be the way forward, because then you get the best of both of us, we all get the chance to sit down, or sit round, have a coffee, talk to the person, have an in-depth chat about their job, their role, what they do, how they play, how they socialise, what their plans are for the town. I believe that an interview is an integral part of getting a job, position on the council, so I would propose that you do both. One, on the surgery, two, I feel maintain your committee to forward the recommendations to the full council.
Just to say that when you said social governing, I wouldn't, I wouldn't like it to be a social, a bit of a bunfight, I go along with Vince. People have got the opportunity on Saturday, they had the opportunity a month ago to come, and Adam and I were inundated with all sorts of things. So it seems a reasonable idea of councillor Howard to, the neighbourhood watch launch was a good example of what we could do. Have people in, give them a cup of coffee, yes, and then have the selection again, the interviewing again. So that's all I have to say, that simple, really.
If it's the case that ward meetings are now being opened up to all councils, then there isn't, seems to me, there isn't a lot of difference between that proposal and what councillor Brooks has proposed. Take the word social out, and I actually would like to, to us, and I think you've really got the same, more or less the same animal. And so councillor House's proposal is either pretty similar to, not very different from, or the same as what councillor Brooks proposed.
I wouldn't like us to forget that every council meeting is open to the public, so anyone, anyone that has any aspirations of becoming a councillor can come and sit on any meetings they want to, as long as they want to. So I feel that the danger of having a social type event, if I find a better term, is that it becomes quite difficult to control that. We're not all going to hear what the person or individuals say. I think that by having an interview, where all councillors can be there if they want to, as has been said, is a far better way of doing it. And it's not a job interview as such, but it is in some ways, it is for public office, and I think to have a, it revolve around just a social chat, which is very ad hoc, and all observe everybody, is not a very professional way to take it forward. Bearing in mind, this is the only time which council can, has the opportunity to decide who joins the council. With an election, we have no say at all, and I wouldn't want to throw that away.
Councillor Brooks?
I won't say any more of this, but I was going to say, yes, I agree, we don't want it as, probably Alf probably used the wrong words, we don't want it as a social thing. I think it's more an information thing, so that people know what the role is. Like, the lady, we sat through the interview, she came...
Like, the lady, we sat through the interview, she came for the first time to the neighbourhood plan meeting. Now, she then became interested by talking to councillors in a professional way in that room on the day. So she comes for a co-option interview, which was like a job interview. And to me, that's not right. None of us have been through that, well, some may have in the past, but no one asked, where did you work, where did you live, and all that when it's down for an election. And I think that's where it was inappropriate. Hopefully, she will come on and it'll be great. But what I want to see is that if you've got people, one of the things to point out is that some, you know that I've come off the CAB thing. Now, to come to a meeting in this room, like I suggested that the public should come, if you haven't got an involvement, it is quite daunting to sit somewhere and not have an involvement. That's why I've come off the CAB, because you sit there like a dummy. And for members of the public to just come here, I can understand why they don't want to do it. You know, I came here originally because I had an interest. But the average member of the public doesn't have that interest in it. And it's a difficult thing, but I think we need to tell people more about the council in an informative way. And that's what I was suggesting about an open day, not really like a social event with tea and cake. It was to give information. But if we are going to go down the road of interview, then I suggest that at some point, whether it's in a working group or not, we have some set questions which actually relate to the role of councillor. They may not even have to be questions, it might be things like, one of the things was, well, we have this amount of meetings at this point and that point, are you able to do it?
Don't let's go into questions of interviews now.
No, but I'm just saying, this is setting up the procedure, isn't it?
Don't have questions mentioned.
And that is also an irritating question, because if someone's working, it was given the impression that we have working groups in the daytime. If someone's working, they are legally entitled to take time off work for council activity, so that's not an issue. That's why we need to sort a proper structure to the interview if that's the way members go forward.
councillor Stokes, councillor Lucas, down there, and then we go.
Thank you, Chair. I have to disagree with an awful lot that Martin has said. First of all, anybody who's going to be co-opted has the opportunity to come to meetings, read, get worked, and listen to what went on. It's not daunting at all, to sit there and listen. The questions are thought out very carefully. I asked a question about, do you work, are you able to attend working meetings during the day? We established the fact that she could. It was a fair question. Nothing wrong with a question like that. Naturally, we're trying to figure out the ability of that person, the character and personality. If there is a group, add a social, for want of a better word, it's not possible that one person, is everybody going to talk to that person? Who's going to listen? It would be, to my mind, a complete mess and it's an awkward way to go through. Thank you, Chair.
I'm not going to go through everything again. It is a suggestion by Vince that surgeries are for information gathering and we do it as we have normally done it with an interviewing panel. And that is what I'm proposing. Please, let's get on.
I thought that councillor Hayley's suggestion about attending was interesting. I actually chose to come to three or four meetings before deciding whether I thought I could contribute to the chemistry of this group. To make it a mandatory requirement to attend three or two or whatever is, I think, an interesting point. But is it enforceable in some, but I do think it's of interest. And then, otherwise, you've got councillor Howard's suggestion of the two things, the open meeting, the opportunity to gather information in the way that this lady apparently did via an open day of the plan meeting. And that then stands in the face of the social meeting. And so that deals with that. As well as whatever final selection that is used. So I think the attends of meetings before is of interest, I presume.
Right, I think councillor Howard is making a proposal.
The proposal is to encourage members of the public to attend surgeries, but backed up by a process, an interview process.
I second that, actually, I opposed it as well. I don't mind it either.
Okay, proposal, all those in favour, please? Three, all those against? Three abstentions? Two, three abstentions? Okay, three, three, three? Chairman's casting votes again. So I shall obviously vote the way I voted before. So against. Falls?
Not, I would like to see that...
You're making a little vote?
Yes, that this item is deferred and perhaps a working group is put together to actually sort out, to do this properly, because we're not going to get it done tonight. And it's important, and my view is if someone wants to come, like this lady wanted to come on to the council, who have free vacancies, she should be co-opted.
Are you making a proposal to defer?
I would like it deferred and with the possibility of a working group set up to look into how other councils do this. Because the problem we have, and this is important, is that in law, there is nothing that says before the point where we co-opted that lady. It just says that an applicant is co-opted with an overall majority vote. There is no procedure set down in law, and I can't even find any guidance of how you should attract or interview.
It's a council procedure.
Yeah, and everybody does it differently, but I think we need to...
So your proposal's...
A working group, a working group to look in very quickly at how other councils do it, because it happens up and down the line. That is my proposal. And a working group is set up, or if the clerk is willing to, to find information on how, and then it's brought back with a better solution.
I can't, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't get this. What is the proposal?
It's deferred with a working group.
Defer the item and then investigate what other councils are doing, brought back at a future meeting.
With a proposal from a working group on how we move forward. And I'd like to see set questions, how we're going to do the interview, because I don't disagree with what's...
I don't propose, can I have a second there for that proposal, please? Yeah, your second there? All those in favour, please. Yes, all those in favour? Four, all those against? Four?
I'm abstaining, I'm abstention.
Goes with me again then, doesn't it?
Oh dear. I'm not saying anything more.
Chair, I'd like to say...
It's so serious.
There was a proposal, it was voted on and accepted. And then we worked on a deferral. You can't do that.
No, no, it was rejected.
That's the wrong proposal, you prefer to me, not the table.
He's confused, it was rejected.
Can you just recap, Chair, if I have? First proposal stands to encourage members of the public to attend surgeries, but this is then backed up by an interview process. Three votes for, three against, three abstentions. Chairman's vote to reject that proposal.
So that's as well as...
A new proposal was put on the table by councillor Brooks, four votes for, four against, one abstention. Chairman's voted as that, but that motion falls. Okay, now for that.
I'd just like to say that in view of the fact that we did one co-option in a certain way this year already, and these two vacancies are so near in time that it would be a disservice to that co-option candidate if we didn't use the same system. So I propose that we, for the time being, that we use the current system. And perhaps with what Martin has said in future, we look at an alternative, and I agree, probably a better system. Chair?
So you're proposing we use the original system, the current process again? Okay, and a second for that. Councillor Hayley, all those in favour? One, two, three, four, five? Against? Two abstentions? Two, sorry, I missed you.
Because we have a...
Current system, okay? Okay, so agreed the current system?
What was that? What was the, sorry?
The current system, we've agreed.
Thank you, because something was going on there.
So what, what...
I don't believe there's an overall majority.
Five votes for, two against.
An abstention.
Abstentions don't count.
You may not, okay, thank you.
We now need to look at the time to undertake.
See you.
Okay, so it's then to appoint an interview panel and any other arrangements. Okay, last panel was councillor Stokes, councillor Lucas, councillor Hayley and myself. Does anybody want to propose people to sit on that panel?
Can I propose that we accept the previous panel that was already on there? If there's no problem with the panel that's been stood down? If they're all happy to stand, that they stand again? I propose that.
Okay, well, myself, I don't think I can do it because I should be away.
What's this?
Are you in trouble, Joyce?
Yes, I am, actually. Sorry.
You're talking about the interview panel?
Someone is walking up there and I can't hear. Yes, interview panel?
Composition of the interview panel?
Oh, right, yes.
Now, we've got councillor Howard proposing the last interview panel, but I think I might rule myself out of that because I might not be here. Okay?
When will that interview panel be?
I don't know yet.
Oh, right, fine.
It's going to be within the next three weeks, I would have thought, wouldn't it?
Right.
In which case, may I make a proposal that Adam comes on?
This is...
Adam, can I say, sorry, Chair, can I say the reason why? Adam's very experienced at interviewing. And it's important that you've done some interviewing, so you know what you're doing. Thank you.
I appreciate your... If nobody else wants to step in, then I would do it.
Well, I was going to offer myself, not being stood off, before that, so I hope myself to join the previous for less yourself. Okay, councillor Brooks?
Can we, because Joyce didn't, I've not been rude, but Joyce didn't hear, can we confirm that Joyce wants to actually be on the panel? Because she didn't, she didn't come last time.
Yes, there was a reason, a very good reason.
Yeah, I'm not asking.
Okay, so we have now an interview panel of possible five, which is councillor, well, councillor Hayley, councillor Stokes, councillor Lucas and councillor Elliot.
I'll propose that.
So do we go with councillor there?
I'll propose that.
Five, five. Have a second for that, please, councillor. All in favour? Against?
I'm just abstaining. While I voted against, it's like I can hardly vote for something.
Right.
Well, that's why I'm abstaining.
Okay, arrangements for that then? Obviously, we have another council meeting in a month's time, we've just got, I think, to get it through in that time. Unless you can convince me otherwise. Next council meeting is on the ninth of March, which means we need to completely interview us by the first of March. All right.
We've got a home gown or something for it now. Sorry, Chair.
Okay, so we would be to interview by the, I said the first, which is fairly tight. The one after that would be the... Annual meeting? No. The... Oh, certainly for April. So perhaps what, can we say to the interview panel to meet and decide on their timescale? Would that be the best thing to do?
Do we need an extra meeting to make that decision?
Will that be, sorry, a meeting or...
How many candidates are there, ma'am?
We have two candidates already, two applicants already. I mean, at the moment, those two candidates could be interviewed. We've not advertised it, I mean, to do that, we'll have to suspend standing orders and say we will not do that, we just... We would have to suspend standing orders and interview those two, so it would mean that we would not advertise. Councillor Brooks, that is under...
Can we go down that route, so we get it filled up ready for the next year of council? Because there's nothing in the rules that says, as has been pointed out before, about that we need to advertise it. If we've got two women people, I don't think we should lose them if they're appropriate felt to be on the council. Because people do know, yeah, but as I said, it does say in the report, in the report, actually revoke those standing orders to accommodate that. And I think people do know, it was in the newspaper, I did a lot of, and other councillors do a lot of telling people that their vacancies, so I think we could perhaps accept...
That sounds of the council, but they want to stop, sir. Just about, must we, you know, suspend standing orders and just interview the two applicants we have?
Chair, the only problem with that, and you know, I accept and go along with it in a way, but the only problem with that is that if one of them, or both of them, are not suitable, we end up with nobody. Because we're interviewing somebody, they're not likely, we don't have to take them. You know, and we could get somebody who's, I won't go through, you all know.
We've got three years.
Sorry, councillor Brooks, you only speak when I indicate you speak, please, so don't keep looking in. The point is that standing order says we need to interview, we need to advertise. We can revoke those standing orders, we can do that. If we're not going to advertise, then we've got two people who might fill those posts, might. If we find that one or neither of them fills the post, then we'd have to go and advertise. So it may just be delaying the process by doing that.
We've got a full council meeting at the end of this month. Because we've got two candidates that have applied, why don't we invite them for interviews sooner rather than later, so the council can make a decision at the end of this month? If those candidates are found to be unsuitable, then we'd go for the option then to advertise. Thank you.
So is that proposal? Yes, second, second councillor Stokes.
No, I was going to second it.
All in favour?
We got there in the end.
Okay.
So that's, you know...
So the two people, yes, you know, the two people, the slide will be interviewed.
Standing order is suspended until you can access soon as possible.
Okay, I take that virtue of suspending standing orders as well, I suppose. Yeah, standing orders to do that. So we're not going to advertise, we're not going to look at closing date for interviews, application, sorry. The date of the interviews can be...
I'll leave it to the clerk.
Yeah, I'll have the clerk to do that. Sorry. With a view to being able to bring forward to the next council meeting recommendations for co-opting, councillor Brooks.
And you are going to endorse five members of that? So we can come along and listen the next time, right? Thank you.
On the same lines as we did the last one?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. My, well, do come live.
Okay, everybody, if... The main part of it is that this will not be an RCC event, this will be an Oakham Town Council event. RCC will supply the beacon, they will get it to cut across if members agree, they will take it away afterwards, they will provide advice, they may be able to provide training. So if members are going to agree to this, the date is Thursday, April 21st, obviously. The next one is the timing, that may well be out of the council's hands, because I think this is a national thing, so there will probably be a specific, a specified time at which that beacon is going to be lit. Whether any of the activities are going to be put on in the evening, the main point of that is on the evening, there will have to be a number of you present to ensure safety of those attending. Okay? So it's Thursday, April 21st, and really, everything else, I think he's reading himself exuberant, but is there anybody else have questions?
If I put a different hat on, always responsible for the fire cover for the previous licence of the beacon, I will. Um, if I put a different hat on, uh, always responsible for the fire cover for the previous licence and the beacon, I will be happy as a town council member and a member of the local authority to take this on, this role on. Supervise any safety issues, carry out any training and ensure that it's carried out before proper, um, gusto that it deserves.
Just your three, um, Richard?
Don't.
Just your item three in the bottom.
Or two.
Is it? Is it, do you mean to say, should the town council put some other activities on?
Well, whether, whether the council, say, wants a burger van there or, or, or a concert or, or, you know, I mean, it's, it's really for members to decide, or whether it should just be, uh, the beacon lighting to not detract from that part of it.
Which, which other people are organising that? You stressed that it's not an Oakham Town Council, yeah?
It is an Oakham Town Council, don't mind, I'm struck the opposite, it is an Oakham Town Council event.
Well, sorry, but I mean, the beacon is being brought in.
The beacon is being supplied by Rattlin County Council.
That's what I meant was like, that the content is being ordained other than from Oakham Town Council. No?
No, no. All, all Rattlin County Councils are supplying, are supplying the beacon, which was used in the VE celebrations last year.
Right, very well. So it's up to the town, it's up to the town council to decide what activities they want. If any, around, if any, yeah, that's all it is.
Uh, could this be a, a thing the promotion committee, I don't like to put any extra work on the promotion committee, but. It seems that it's a thing that we could probably do, also, who is going to promote it? Who's going to do any advertising, or is it just going, is this coming out of Oakham Town Council budget?
Yeah.
Good, because in that case, Oakham Town Council sort it out. Sorry, I was just making a point.
Was there a proposal on sort of that?
No, I was wondering whether it was going to be a, a promotion thing that we've got to do.
That's up to you.
Uh, but I think we've got enough on our plate at the moment, so.
So not making a proposal, but that's.
No, but the budget must be covered by Oakham Town Council.
Right, Castle Brooks.
Yeah.
I'm slightly disappointed that Rattlin County Council have dumped the Rattlin beacon on Oakham Town Council at such short notice.
The reason, the reason is that the, the, the proposed venue was the castle, and the castle is not available. So they, all they've done is ask.
Yeah.
Whether it would be interested, it's, it's not dumping on it, it's, you can see from the report, if Oakham Town Council doesn't do it, then RCC will then approach the new Rattlin showground and also Loppingham. They are, they are asked, this is a matter of course.
Yeah, I, I, I would be very, but saying that, I would be happy for the beacon to become an Oakham Town Council event, if it is done with Vince's offer to arrange and see that things are done properly. I don't think, um, we have it in the budget or finances to put on any of it, this beacon's likely to be lit after dark, which means that even in April, that's going to be quite late in the, in, in the evening. Um, and I, I, I think the VE one was very low attempted, I think if it's in Cuts Close, and perhaps if we could find voluntarily a small band to put on a bit of music, that might be. A, a good way, so I wouldn't object, but I just feel a bit disappointed that it's come to us so late as a suggestion, because they would have known about this a long time ago, these national events get organised years and years.
I'm aware they, 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 it's not a good, the work date has only happened in the last few months. Then, anyway, we have got first refusal, it's not that we have to do anything.
Some luck, I think, but I don't think we can spend a lot of money.
Can, can I start it?
Um. If the promotion group isn't able to take it on, sounds as if somebody ought to, ought to.
Yes.
Uh, rapidly start to focus on it.
We can help.
Still no words.
Okay, can I start that?
Can I propose, Chair, that the promotions working group take this on as a ongoing, um. Project. Um. We will make a night of it, one way or another, we will maintain the budget of nothing, and we will make, uh, a good show for Oakham Town Council, that is my proposal. We will take it on, put it on the promotions working group.
Have a second of that? Councillor Brooks? All those in favour? Can we put both hands up?
Yeah. That's only, that's only as, as some help from.
Thank you, so, uh, we live in a, the, we're, we're in a non-budget, we've come forward with a. Sponsorship. With a sponsorship project. On a minimal, it's about, about more than that. Okay, um, insurance provision, which is item thirteen, that's, uh, the clerk.
Um, again, uh, you've got, um, you've got the reports there, you've also, uh, in front of you, uh, this was emailed out to you yesterday, you've got our copies in front of you. Uh, this is Hiscox, which is, which is a company actually used by Kane and Company. So Kane and Company, uh, whose original premium was six thousand and twenty-one, is now five thousand four hundred and nineteen, it's amazing what's. I don't see what's happened. However, what you've got there is a summary of the cover, uh, you've also got the amended, uh, amounts from, uh, Kane and Company, which I haven't been able to fill in. Notwithstanding all of that, uh, the recommendation in front of you is that the council remains with its current provider, which is Azuric.
Any questions? Any questions, Chris? Comments, questions? Castle Brooks?
Yeah, I had a comment and I did raise it at the clerk beforehand, but he was happy for me to raise it at tonight's meeting. Um, we'd, I would like the council to look into the reason why our two tenants are not, um, paying their own.
Just, no, no, that's not, that's not on the, yeah.
No, no, it's in, it's included in the cost, it's something we've got to look at.
Okay, well, okay, go ahead, that's people, yeah.
So we wanted, um.
Yeah, I'll look into that and get back to.
You wanted consent from the council?
No, no, that's fine, I'm, I'm looking to bring it and, and let you all know.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, Martin.
That's fine, so I didn't really need to say anything.
No, 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 uh, the point Martin's raising is, is, um, I haven't had time to check the leases, but it's highly likely that in the leases, there will be provision, uh, because, uh, the tenants' club and the boss club, uh, the council ensures their pavilions and clubhouses. Now, um, we just need to check the leases, but there, as, as Martin has pointed out, there is probably provision in those leases that they are recharged the premium that the council is paying to its insurers to cover those buildings. Okay, so that's something, uh, Martin's raised and I'm happy to look into it and get back to you.
Okay, okay. Okay, let me then get back to deciding which insurer to, to accept.
Could I just ask why, uh, we should, you are, um, in the face of that, Hiscox, are still in favour of staying with the original source?
Well, well, Hiscox is still more anyway.
Appreciate that, but. Is that the reason?
Hiscox is, uh, Zurich five one six five, Hiscox with Denny or Kane and Company with Denny five four, the cheapest of the three is WPS. However, my, uh, the recommendation is that we've, uh, been dealing with Zurich for the last three years, they know the business of Oakham Town Council, every time I've dealt with them, they've been very friendly, very efficient. Uh, we've had calls to have quite a few conversations with them about, uh, community centre, about the insurance, uh, and what we need to be doing with that, uh, if we're gonna hire it out or that sort of stuff, they've been very, very good with that. Um, so my, um, they are obviously slightly more than WPS, but I would stick to that recommendation that we stay with Zurich.
Because we know them, because.
And they know us, yes, and they know, know, know the business of our council, and they have, you know, for the last three years. The only thing obviously that we, we, we haven't, or can't judge, is what would happen if there was a claim against the council, because there haven't been any in the last three years. And that's really weird. We don't, we don't try that, so we do it. You know, we'd rather not try, you know, choose a company by that method, but, um, um, I've always found them extremely efficient to do that.
Well, of course, obviously, if you took that to, we'd never, one would never know if we existed, I'm sure, but that's.
Councillor Lewis?
Can I just ask, and, uh, don't laugh at this, but, uh, regalia, does that include, uh, these swords and things like that? I mean, does that include the content?
They're included in contents.
Contents of this bit of, oh.
Of this, of this.
I wouldn't mind these to go look on the walkabout.
I'm sure I know what you're.
No, I know what regalia is, but I'm just.
Regalia, regalia goes outside, yeah.
I just don't want those.
Okay, Councillor Stokes?
Can I say, I think we've had very sound and just advice from, uh, Richard, our clerk.
Yes.
Um, um. His experience with Zurich, I think, um, is, is sound, and, and quite honest, and I propose that we, we go along with Zurich.
Can I, before I take a second, Castle Brooks?
I'm, I'm just a bit concerned about the figure for just Joyce pointing that out, because now for the regalia, because I was told that what the mayor wears round his neck is worth eighteen thousand pounds. So I think we're undershored on.
Well, regalia, regalia is twenty pounds worth more separately, regalia is listed separately as twenty thousand pounds.
But we're talking about all the.
And the content, the contents of this building are listed as by Zurich at forty, well, nearing a fifty thousand pounds.
Ten or fifteen.
That's what I just asked.
There's three chains, Martin, which is the one I'm wearing and one.
But they're worth more than twenty thousand pounds, huh?
What, those two necklaces?
No, it's three.
Three, sorry, three.
I, I remember back in, when we were talking about that and getting the change of jewels, that was valued at eighteen thousand pounds then, five years ago.
Well, I, I started.
I'm a little team, five years. Chair, can I, sorry, Chair, maybe, I think you'll find that, uh, the, the regalia, the insurance premium is enough to replace that. I believe the replacement cost of your jewellery is around about six thousand pounds, and this would be considerably less. So in fact, the insurance premium is more than enough to cover the replacement of the regalia.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I'm thinking.
Now, if there's any problem, then they can't, it can't be updated during the period, no? Okay. Proposal was, councillor Stokes?
Accept Zurich.
Accept Zurich, can I have a second for that? Councillor Howe, all those in favour accepting Zurich insurance? Like those guests? Look up there. Okay, John, that over?
Look, yes.
Yes, okay. Okay, is that all we've got on that? Okay, next arrangement is item fourteen, Remembrance Service, this is the annual Remembrance Day Parade in service, and also the Act of Remembrance on the eleventh of November takes place in the High Street. Um, I mean, you've, you've got the report in front of you, are there any questions, any comments? No? Okay, can I take the first?
There is, I was hoping that someone else was going to speak.
Go on then.
Um, I'm not, um, happy to accept this, I'm not against the event, but, um, this is a Royal British Legion event nationally, yes, it might be a regional event, and it's not a civic event. Dignitaries are invited to a Royal British Legion event, I'm concerned that. A member of the council is asking to use council services, which we don't know what the cost will be, and we can't, as a council, support a charity. Let alone put the extra burden on the office, they're going to have an incredible workload over the next year or so, if we take on the cemetery, car parking, the national, the neighbourhood plan and that, and this is. An additional burden that I don't think that the town council should take on, especially when the words say, if I leave the council, I will be happy to take it on in my private capacity. I suggest that the Oakham branch of the Royal British Legion start appealing for help from the community and not the town council, it isn't a town council event and should never be a town council event, it is the Royal British Legion's event for remembrance. And that's all I can say, I can't accept it, accept it.
No, I thought at that point, that's a very distinctive alternative to this, and, all right, sorry, that is a distinctive alternative, and that is what, that's it. There is another way, look here, council does not take it on.
Yeah, okay, any other comments? I, I think you find that the Royal British Legion fronts up most of it, especially the, the national bit, but locally, as I'm aware, there's quite a lot of work between councils and the Royal British Legion. Um, it's an event which is, um, an annual event, which is quite a solemn event, and it is something which I think this council could very well do and boost. Boost its, um, reputation within the community, being seen as some sort of twin badge, badge between the council and the British Legion. Um, I mean, over the last few years, we've done quite, well, three, three different entries, which have all been received very well, the, the actual organisation of them, so I don't see the problem, uh, with the council doing this, the, the item that, the, um. Statement the council has said it's going to cost the council a lot of money is not true, the only thing the council do will be to send out invitations and receive acceptance or rejections. That's all the administrative work that the council will be, councillor Lewis, have you got the hand up there?
No, I was.
That's the first line.
Um, thank you, Chair, um, I, I've just had a thought, the British Legion as an organisation and a group organising, um, the suggestion here is that one person from the town council takes it, which is your good self. Um, which I do have to question, and I, I don't mean that in a derogatory way, but it's one person, I think, you know, if we take, if we do take it on, it's a group thing and not an individual.
Can I say then that, um, what, what has happened is I've done much of the work over the last two years.
Yes.
Um, because George Kirk has done a sterling job over decades, is now in his mid nineties, and obviously starts to struggle a little bit to do that. Um, this year, and something they haven't got at the moment is sort of an operational, it's an admin order, which should eas, we can easily be picked off the shelf and say, if we do this, you do X, Y, Z. And it's fairly simple like that, once that is written, it's something which can be maintained throughout the years, and you're knowing there who's being invited, uh, what organisation to be invited in the parade, um, or what dignitaries you invite for church service, or, it's a fairly simple operation, it just needs to be done in sufficient time, it's not a, it's not a difficult task. Councillor Brooks?
I, I, I would dispute the thing that it's not going to cost, because I brought a form to this office for the road closures, and one of the first things that didn't seem relevant at the time was, oh, that's good, we can add the road closure for the Remembrance Service, which suggested to me that a decision had already been made. Um, at the moment, Rattlin County Council in goodwill have said if we work together, and I say we, because I was on a committee that have come off, um, there would be legal fees waived. Now, we're talking of two road closures, if there's no guarantee with Rattlin County Council's finances that they're going to agree to waive that, and that's an annual fee of fourteen hundred pounds plus. Also, our clerk's time and his assistant's clerk is very thing, now, I can't see why, I'm not, Alpha's done it and does a wonderful job, he obviously still wants to do it, and I take that point, why can't you go to Kendrew Barracks or even St George's Barracks that has the freedom of. Entry into our town, which we hardly ever see these days, um, and work with the people and, you know, get some support from there, I'm not, because I'm not sure that the council is able to take it on in. In the way, and I doubt, I, I, I don't need to doubt you, but I just find the comment where you say, when I leave the council or if I leave, I'll take it with me as a private thing if the council don't want it, well. The, the words, it just seems like it's been brought here for convenience.
You've added words in there which are not there.
Sorry?
You've added words in which are incorrect.
No, no, it says if you leave the council.
It says that I will take it on as a private individual.
And if you leave the council.
And nobody is, nobody can secure their seat, added for item, we all know that the next election we all might not be returned, or we might decide to resign, or we might be ill, or whatever it could be, not everybody's going to be here forever. The point I'm making is that if, I will do this anyway, whether the council is going to be doing this or not, but I, I see this as an excellent idea for the council to promote itself, which is something it needs to do, which Councillor Brooks is always saying to us, the council needs to raise its profile. So, yeah, um, I, I, I will, I mean, I, I have no problem with that, and I think, um, the British Legion have got a good idea here, because it, it could help them and it would help the council, I see this as a very proposed organisation. Councillor Hayley, go on. No, okay. Councillor Lewis?
Is, are we in danger of, is there a distinction without a difference, is it in the semantics? It is a British Legion tradition. Everything about this time of year is seen as a British Legion event, taking the, the, what councillor Brooks said. If the council is seen to be supporting the British Legion every year as fully as it can do, doesn't that satisfy both sides of this? Should, should it not in fact officially or remain a British Legion thing with the maximum support possible from the council?
It always depends what you, what I buy, what is the maximum support, isn't it?
Well, the full support that's had up to now from the council, but, but that it, as far as I know.
No words used, whether it's in this or anything else, should indicate that it's. I don't know if that's support from the council.
Well, all right then.
The council will never be involved by the council, I think.
Well, it remains maybe the point that it is a British Legion thing nationally and, and the council will be supporting the British Legion in doing what it's doing at this time. That is perhaps usefully different to seeing it in some way taken away from the British Legion.
No, it's, sorry, I, I think that's a long impression going across there. It's not taking it away from the British Legion. It's joining with the British Legion and supporting both organisations, both organisations supporting the event.
Right, well then, in that case, we are, we are, there's a distinction without a difference. If, if, if you now mean to say that all this is, is support for the British Legion and what they're doing on this day, then, fine, we're on the drive.
That's what Brooks, you've got the handle.
Yeah, I, my concern is that we could be, I don't know, trading in dangerous waters, because the Royal British Legion event as it is, i- it's not political. I'm not saying Oakham Town Council's political. But nationally, there is always criticism of politicians being hijacking it. And the words that this event will raise the profile of the town council is to me very murky, to use the event of the Royal British Legion to boost Oakham Town Council. And I think, I think that's wrong words, because if a politician says something, which we saw last year with, so we don't have to mention names, it was all over the national media of how inappropriate the event was used. And it's not the first year it's happened. So I, I find it slightly dispoesible that it's to raise the council's profile. That's just my opinion.
I'm not saying that, but within that, the, the point is that we are supporting the British Legion, we're not making any political statements whatsoever. There's no political implication to it. We are not, I obviously think we are not politicians or independent people who sit on this council for the benefit of the people we serve. We don't sit here for the benefit of the organ, of a political organisation. So I, I don't see that at all. And I think this is an excellent opportunity for this council to be seen to be assisting the British Legion and in an event which is becoming more and more high profile each year, especially over the last few years when we've been, we've been fighting it overseas. I, I don't see that.
That's passive wording.
Well, well, straight away then, I think that possibly satisfies what councillor Sturrock said, that the support for the British Legion should be. The British Legion should remain as the headline and support.
Okay, if that's the way you want, I think the idea from the British Legion was it would be something dual batched, that's council and the.
That does seem to be different.
Okay, but that, that was their idea.
That's, yeah.
And I think it's fair political, P, so.
Okay. No, is there somebody else on this?
I don't think.
Councillor Howe, did you must be?
Um, yeah, having listened to all sides yet again, um, I think that, yeah, I, I accept what Martin said about the cost. Providing we're not incurring huge amount of costs, this is actually a platform for joined up thinking. I would propose that we accept with the caveat of a review in two years of any costs that are incurred by the council. To fully support you and give you a team to work with if you need a team, to work hand in hand with the Royal British Legion, providing the costs are, you know, identifiable.
Okay, Clark's just pointing something out to me from the British Legion letter and from the chairman, it says, I should stress that I do not envisage any significant shift of financial responsibility onto the council. And the only financial implication I can see is probably the time of the assistant clerk to collate letters, put them into envelopes, post them on the cost of the postage and then receiving back acceptance or rejections of attendance. And that's the, that's the only cost I can see.
But if, if that is any cost, that is reviewable.
Yeah.
And that is, that gives us a KPI to work to. So in future, we can turn around and say, the cost of the town council has been fifteen pounds seventy five, postage and stamps.
Do you want to make a proposal or?
My proposal is to accept that with a review in twenty four months.
Could we go after two years?
Yes.
That's two events, shall we say?
Yes, two events.
Yeah, okay.
Councillor Brooks?
I, I am still concerned about the road closure costs, because that is fourteen hundred pounds. That's often.
The county council do not charge for road closures for the.
There's no guarantee. It's all good.
There's no guarantees in life, but they have done for as many years as I can remember. They, they, they don't charge for it.
Can I ask, can I ask second please?
Second, okay, we've got a proposal from council house, second from council, all those in favour? One, two, three, four, five, against. Two abstentions. Two, okay, five, two, two. Let's go. Thank you very much. Okay, the next rule, I think, is, um. Fifteen, which is three items, two invoices from Light and one from the council. And council, although I think, think on the light, bullet light.
The, the only thing I'd say, the only thing I'd say, Chairman, is in regard to light, there, there obviously have been several issues raised that we've all, we're all more than aware of because they've come through an email. Michael, Michael Hayley, he raised an issue that the PAT testing didn't appear to be done in line with a certain standard. And there is a reply came back from EML today on that. I don't know whether that satisfies Michael's questions or not. So to me, the, the town council, when I had the meeting with Light and, and Alfie, you were there, at that meeting, I said, we've got no legal basis on to refuse payment. The only thing I'd say, because obviously I'll open it up for the rest of the councils to speak, in regard to supply of additional Christmas lighting, that invoice there for five, seven, six, six, thirty one, that is definitively outside of the contract of fitting. So regardless of how they feel about the first invoice, that to me is a must and should be organised. There was also written into our Ts and Cs when we signed on that we, we paid them a certain amount at a certain point and a balance we follow. And we haven't paid them anything at all yet. So these payments are overdue. That's all I have to say, Chairman. I'll leave it, the council and I've only been, the, I've only been trying to facilitate the communications through email live to the council. So I'm, I'm not one way of you on this. Thank you. Michael, sorry, you said that. I did that, but I didn't know what happened.
As Adam alluded to the email, I wasn't happy with the response in as much. They have said they are aware of their responsibilities. They haven't actually answered the question, but they have actually carried out the tests. And the information, the reason I've raised it, the information they've provided us with, didn't actually produce any evidence that they had carried out the tests or that they had checked the existing installation. Now, I'm not suggesting that's the reason to withhold payment, but, but I think it's something that needs to think about for the future, that, that we do ensure whoever does the lighting, that they do take these into consideration and that we are supplied with that information.
How do you propose it? Do you actually do that?
Then we, we build it into contracts, that, that testing inspection of the lights themselves and the installation they're going to connect to, which is a requirement, that they do that. And if they don't do it, we then have reason, legal grounds to withhold part payments.
Light's system is already in the contract.
PAT testing, sorry, PAT test, I think, yes.
Can I be looking at something about contract monitoring more than that?
Can I come back before you go over the other side? But very briefly on that, that I, I agree partly with Mike, what Michael said there, because it is important that it was like pulling hens to get some of the documentation back from them, like the PAT test certificate, where they said it, and all it is, is a spreadsheet saying one, two, three, four, five, six, okay, 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 okay. And what it is, Michael's alluded to the fact that the document is actually, is a proper PAT test document. You'll find it on the leads of most electrical things where it's been signed and it's dated, it's got the V S down. We don't have that. And moving forward, we should probably insist that we have some type, some formal certification, not just a spreadsheet. That's why I would say. As for the infrastructure, the infrastructure is actually Rutland County Council. Rutland County Council, the ones that uphold the infrastructure, which is, comes up the lamp posts. And when there was an issue with the lighting over Christmas, I had concerns that because of when the light kept tripping out, that it was an issue with either the installation that had been done by Light or was it with the actual infrastructure? Rutland County Council came out and checked the infrastructure and said it was correct. So maybe the infrastructure was a county council issue. We should be requesting confirmation that that is sound, but that's my observation.
Councillor Brooks first, is that?
No, I'm, I'm not going to object to the second payment, because things about that and figures that were banded about is now clarified to the point that I'm satisfied that the clerk agrees that that is a correct amount for the additional lighting. But what I do have a problem with is that when we refer back to the original quotation, they were very aware that they should be tagging fifty five I volts and issuing a certificate. That's very clear. They have not tagged any volts. You move on to the second item, and then I hear now they haven't even issued an official certificate, which is a requirement. The second item which they were asked about was to check the electrical infrastructure points. If they had checked them, I have no evidence to say that they didn't, but visually from the photographs I took after they left the state of the installation, if they were checking and contacting the clerk and saying what was wrong, we wouldn't have had councillor Brooks, myself, going around photographing and pointing out the socket ripped off the wall in the marketplace, the box above the drawers, et cetera. So I think there's enough evidence to say that they haven't complied with what is a very basic contract. And, and it's a concern, because it's not the first time they've done it. When we used to do it as a council, we used to use, I believe, EON. Some of their tags are still hanging on some of those. There are even older tags hanging on anchor points. So you would expect nice shiny new ones. You would expect green stickers on all the sockets. There is none of that. These people come as subcontractors. Now, we may have to take on the role of going to be more supervision, but somebody has to go and watch when they come. We're paying them a lot of money for this and there's no supervision. The, the company who subcontracted are not supervised by their contractor or the, you know, our contractor, Light. And it's, it's, it's not, it's not good. I reported, apart from the photographic evidence, that the Christmas lights in the marketplace were off from Christmas until they came down. But we've paid for those. And, and to me, we, you know, I don't know where the councillor gets the opinion, if he's qualified, of the fact that, you know, we don't have any legal redress. I think we have enough evidence to show them from photographs and the fact that there's no tagging, we don't have a certificate, that we go back and say, we're not paying for this testing, simple as that, because the, I, I, I was there when they came down in their van and they just put them up. If they were testing, they wouldn't put these lights up in the High Street without, with the burnt out sections. There were about, I think, out of my counting them for you, so I can't remember the number, but you know how many sections had burnt out lights. If you were testing to a standard requirement, you would contact the council and say, well, we can't put your lights up because a good percentage of them don't work properly. So I think there is enough evidence to go back to them. We should pay number two, no problem with that. And, but we, we should be going back and saying, look, you have me for those.
Is that the reason why we are letting go of?
I don't, I don't want to slur any third party, but there was a suggestion that sometimes the market traders utilise the same sockets of the Christmas lights too and that they may have interfered or unplugged them, not plugged them back in again correctly. There's also a question raised by Light when I brought this back, that there had been some issues where time clocks had been interfered with. So it could be that when they unplug it, the time clock is then not working when it's plugged back in, because they're, and they're not digital, they're analog time clocks. So they're out of date. And Light has suggested moving forward that we should avoid using time clocks. While I'm stood, I'll take the point, come back to what Martin said. You're right, Martin, I'm not qualified to talk on lighting installations, whether they're PAT tested, whether they're secure or anything. That's not my job. That's why I'm not forming any opinion on it and I have not any opinion that I can pass on legal things. But I did read our contract with Light and that contract said, put them up, take them down, PAT test them, anchor test them, store them. We didn't say, can you tag everything? We asked for a proof that they're doing it, a spreadsheet, a document. And for the last five or six years, the council has accepted the documentation that we've had from Light. So that's why I've made the comment that given what we've actually put in our contract and given what they've done, and when you identified the lights that were faulty and the issues with some electrical wires exposed and a box being opened, when that was brought to Light's attention, within the contract it states, if we identify an issue, they are to attend the site and correct it. And they did that. So naturally, everything that's in our contract, they've done it. When we've raised an issue, they've come and rectified it. When we raised an additional issue, they came and rectified it. So that's why I'm saying that, I'm not saying I'm a hundred percent happy with what happened. I'm not. And could it have been done better? Yes, it probably could. They did the standard to what we have set. So that says more about both than about Light and EML perhaps. And we must be very careful not to judge men or make any disparaging comments about professional companies, because I've looked at both websites and these are not too big companies. Thank you.
Having listened to all the argument, nowhere am I an, an expert. However, I think we've reached the stage where we've got to think of a way forward.
Yes.
And, and I would suggest that next year, we look at this completely differently and belts and braces, we cover everything and not, and not accept what we've accepted before. I think that's the stage we've reached.
Last one then, Councillor Brooks, can we?
And I agree with that, because I actually asked today for the, and I agree with what Adam is saying. I've had, I've asked many times that tender documents should come to the council. This is basically what they've asked to do. Now, they know as a responsible company, because this is confidential thing, but we know that, that basically they know the requirements, but they haven't adhered to legal requirements, even though they've said we will tag and issue certificates. Whereas in here, in this tender document, we're just saying to them, pull test it, do this, do that, but we're not saying when. So this whole business of, well, we can't change it for this period, but we've got to say to them, yes, we made a mistake with our document for tender and whatever, you've said to us that you will test, you need to supervise or inspect your installations or do we do it? And over the next two years, so that we don't get this repeat, because they've compensated us in the past. They've been, I'm not, you know, I told God for knocking them, but they've not been very good ever since, in my opinion, since we've had them. It's costly and it's a lot of money. And I just want it done properly for the tax payers.
Chair, I think I made it quite clear that we need to move forward.
Yes, I'm just going to take the vote now.
Thank you.
I'll just say to councillor Brooks, I'm taking the vote. Can I propose for that, please?
Chair, I would, because we can't discuss the contract, I would propose on fifteen that the council authorised payments of one, two and three, because obviously there's Rutland County Council cemetery maintenance on, we haven't discussed three yet.
We haven't discussed.
Okay, all right, well, I propose, let's start off, I propose one that we pay. Because you want to do one at the top again.
Okay, yeah, would you?
Yeah.
So you want, you propose.
I propose that we pay.
Fifteen one. Have a second for that, councillor Sturrock. All those in favour? One, two, three, four, five, all those against. One, John, that noting?
Please.
Abstaining. Three, okay. Five, four, one against and three abstentions, okay? On fifteen two then, who makes the proposal?
Chairman, I propose to repay fifteen two.
Okay, seconded. Councillor Sturrock, all in favour? One, two, three, four, five, six, against. Abstentions. Three, and then against. Okay, thank you. Now, one, two, fifteen, three, Rutland County Council's contribution to, sorry, the town council's contribution to Rutland County Council was mentioned as a sum of fifty five thousand pounds. I would point out that this is last year's payment, not next year's payment.
I would point out that this is last year's payment, not next year's payment, okay? It's for 2015, 16. Any points?
Yeah, I don't know what they've done, because on the visit we made, I couldn't see that very much maintenance had been done, so perhaps we could be...
I think you could ask that question over a number of years, not just last year.
Last year we're referring to.
Yes, but I mean, that question could have been asked some years ago, you know, members that previously have the schedule of maintenance, that RCT have their contractors, you have that before. So it's, and it's a contribution to the overall cost of money.
Yes, I mean, the responsibility is obviously down to Rutland County Council to carry out the maintenance, and we are contributing towards that, but obviously, future events will be slightly different. That's what I can do.
Yeah, I was just going to say, having moved to the schedule, what they're supposed to do, doesn't mean they're doing it.
No, we are reliant on their contract monitoring to do that. Councillor Brooks?
Yeah, I'm going to vote against this, because I don't see that there is really much maintenance occurring. And I was disappointed again to hear, basically, that people's greystones are being done, because all they're doing is hacking the grass. And I don't think we should contribute towards that.
Okay. That's right.
If it's the case that the evidence now, in more way or another, that very little maintenance has been carried out, what, why should this be paid, really, then, out of just a respect for the relationship with Rutland County Council? Is that what you're saying?
I don't think we're saying that, though. This is a contribution which we've made over a number of years. And it's been sort of a standing payment, but we can now see, because we've been looking at it much more critically, we're more aware of what has happened.
And what hasn't happened. Which I'll... That's all I think. I agree with what councillor Elliot has said, and I agree with what everyone else has said, really, the cemetery is a mess. And the £5,500, where does it go? They spend approximately £20,000 of their expenditure on that cemetery, probably only about £13,000 of it on grass cutting and hacking hex fences, if I might, if I can use that phrase. I wouldn't say that publicly, though.
Why the public are saying?
What I would say, though, is that this council has never before gone back and challenged it. It has been a historical thing, I'm not saying that is right or wrong. We have paid this payment as our contribution towards maintaining the cemetery. I believe, and I'll be proposing that we pay it, because it will be the last payment we'll ever be making. And as we move forward, I think that the perfect opportunity is now walking upon us to take over and do the job properly. Of course, that's a decision for another day, but for me, I think the town council should honour their relationship with our county council and pay this payment. Yeah, Councillor Stubbs?
Thank you, Chair. I respect what Adam said. However, my feeling is the reason why we perhaps could challenge it this time, it's because of the fact that we are looking at the possibility of taking the cemetery open. And it's only because of that that we have become aware, I've been round the cemetery many, many times, never done this before, so I wasn't aware of the fact that work wasn't being done. But because we have had the opportunity to see it over and over again, we've established, and I'm sure that previous years had we had done the same, we would have maybe have questioned it. And I'm quite a bit reluctant to vote to pay this amount.
Okay, so I think what you're saying is that it isn't our end lap, really, because we shouldn't pick this up early on. We have mismanaged it. One last statement, then.
It is a proposal, but with an addition to the proposal. And the proposal is, we don't pay it, the money is in the budget for it, that money is reserved for our future costs of maintaining, because we've put the precept up to cover for costs of possibly taking on the cemetery. So I feel that it would be better served that, you know, we keep that money for future maintenance, which could be happening from April or May this year. So that's the caveat to it, is that the money is kept for...
Yeah, yeah, it's fine. Are you making a proposal then, that...
The money's ring fenced, I don't know if town councils could use that term, but it remains in the budget for the cemetery.
If we don't pay it, then it will remain in the budget.
Yeah, that's what I'm proposing.
So your proposal is that we do not make the payment?
Yes, and that the money is...
Well, really, it's not paid, the money is paid for future maintenance of the cemetery.
Okay, yeah. So go for that, Councillor Stubbs, all in favour?
I'm against that, Chair. I do, because he's making an assumption that we're taking over the cemetery, and I can't be part of making an assumption like that.
I understand.
Your own statement.
Can I just, can I just say, we've already actually, as a council, decided we're going to take it over, subject to it being to a standard acceptable, so it's not an assumption, it is reserved money for a future...
Thank you. Item 16, and we could bring up the council computer, the clerk here.
Yes, Chairman, so again, you've got that there, you've got the current law or post agreement with Millennium, the recommendation that we enter an agreement for the two desktops only. We don't feel there's any need, given the very limited use that the laptop has, that there is any need to do that. I have spoken to another local company, who you've got their charges there, £60 for 380 per month, that's against Millennium, who are going to be charging £25 per month. And really, the main thing for the council as a public body is it has got to have some form I T platter. I mean, it might not be appropriate for private individuals, but as a public body, myself and Alison have got to have a piece of mind that we can pick up the phone, and Millennium will be with us in a couple of hours. Councillor Stubbs?
Thank you, Chair. Can I really short circuit this, but I will have, and that's in my opinion, we don't need a long debate. I've read the report, I've listened to Richard, we've had a good service from this company in the past, and I'm willing to propose that we accept.
Forty seconds, Councillor Brooks, and last one.
Yeah, I don't like the idea of starting the debate, but I was going to make a similar comment. Well, it is by proposing immediately. What I feel is that, obviously, I do look at things and see about computer things, and I think Millennium are providing a very good value for money cover, which is, you know, normally a computer cover, as we've seen from the other company, at £60 a month, that's quite reasonable, but it can go through the roof. So I would, when the proposal comes, which it has been, I'd be happy to second that we go with it.
So you're second?
Yes, but I think people might want to make some comments.
I'll just go ask you, if this is an alternative local supply, can we ask who that is, please?
I'm willing to, sorry, I'll just know that after.
Okay.
I'd already seconded it.
Okay. Sorry, I thought, I didn't realise that.
Sorry, I didn't do that.
What I said was, I mean, more for... Okay, all those in favour?
Yes.
You don't, thank you. Sorry, one against. Do you want to note it?
Oh, yeah.
Richard's very kind, he has hundreds of pounds if the computers break down.
Yeah, item 17. We've reported that from councillor Hayley, which is fairly explanatory. Any questions? What is it, we just need to elect another council representative for the Victoria Hall trustees. That's it, Brooks.
I have a nomination, I have asked the person if they want to do it, but first of all, I would just like to raise a concern of the conflict of interest reason. Because as a trustee, there's no difference from being a town council trustee than a co-opted member, apart from the fact you get an extra years term, it's five years according to the deeds, and it's four years as a town councillor. So I felt that a bit, not having a dig at you, Martin, it's a conflict of interest. And I did notice that on one of your earlier documents, which we had to note, that you're working as a group, which basically, and I don't want to lose you from the council, because you do a wonderful job, but there is a conflict of interest there, that the tenant has approached Oakham Town Council now as a trustee's role.
We're getting off the article.
But this is a problem for a trustee.
We're talking about...
Yeah, but what I'm trying to say is that there is a big conflict of interest, because as a trustee, you are legally responsible to protect the income from that charity. And if you're going to, so I'll finish there, but it's just, it's just something I'd want Michael to look at, so there's not a problem down the line. So I'd like to nominate Jasmine for it, she's indicated that she would be interested. But I would also like to be in the situation of asking the town council officially to look into why we are not appointing the correct number of trustees. We should have, I believe, three, and the Rutland County Council, which is named as Rutland District Council, should have three. So in theory, the council has overall control, and then appoints the co-opted people. But at the moment, it's the other way around. Where I put my name forward to be appointed, as it legally says, and I refuse. But I'm happy to nominate...
Let me answer two of those. Some years ago, before we came on the council, we decided by the council, only appoint one member. It had three on, and they decided at that point that there would only be one.
But it's a legal requirement.
It's not a legal requirement.
It is, it's in the deed, I read it.
It cannot, how can it be a legal requirement if the council decides not to appoint three members?
Because it's in the deed, it's on the charity.
It's not the deed, it's the Victoria Hall deeds.
Yeah, and the deed says that the councils must appoint three members.
It's the same, they must, because...
It does, I read it, I'll bring a copy, I'll get someone a copy.
It's up to the council to decide whether they want to appoint or not. If the council doesn't want to appoint, it could appoint anybody. You don't have to have anybody on it. The other one was, oh yeah, the conflict of interest. If councillor Hayley's taken it, so there's no reason why you can't make a declaration of interest on his form, and that will cover that. You're done, okay.
I didn't want to see him get into trouble with it.
He was, he made a declaration, if he's made a declaration of interest in that, then what's it about, he raised it. There's another point there, I can't wait for it.
Is it relevant? You can't, well, there's a co-option proposal.
Yeah, we've got the code for councillor Hopkins. I'll second that. Second. All those in favour of councillor Hopkins? One, two, three.
You can vote.
You both in your stuff?
No, I'm abstaining.
Both abstaining, okay. One, two, three, four, five, seven, and two, six. Thank you. Show you a pen, that's finished, Jay. Any questions?
Yes, I have been very grateful to the clerk, I took up the advice that we phoned the clerk, and I think he's at despair, because he's answered all my questions. Sorry about that, Richard, but except that we did discuss the contribution to the CCTV. Over a year ago, there was a public meeting, and we know from when we had a representative that the system was shoddy, but the leader of, the late leader of Rutland County Council said in a public meeting that the CCTV didn't work in Oakham. So I did actually mention this at one point at the council, why we were paying for something that doesn't work. So I would like the council to ask for the £2,000 back, because we did actually vote we don't want to contribute. I know this, I think, Richard was telling me, falls into this current year in arrears, but why should we have paid £2,000 for something that doesn't work? You know, I've got a video evidence of it, where it was said very publicly that we're going to implement a new system, which we have now, because it doesn't work, and it hasn't worked for a long time, was his words.
Was it that it didn't work at that time, or it just doesn't work at all?
It doesn't work at all. He said it publicly, yeah, he said that publicly. It was at the police...
It's not the agenda, no.
No, but it's not an agenda item, but what I'm saying is that it's a payment that's been made for something that...
Councillor Hamer, definitely, Councillor, all in favour? You don't, no, sorry.
Abstaining.
Abstaining, one abstention, Councillor Brooks. Thank you very much, the meeting is now closed at 20:49.
Can I remind everybody that they're invited on Saturday morning, nine till twelve?
Thank you.